In just a few minutes. But before we begin, we would like to welcome everyone who's joined us for the swearing in of three county commissioners this afternoon. We had elections in three of the different districts of Buncombe County and the elections that just transpired in November. So we're going to be swearing in existing commissioners, current commissioners, Al Whitesides and Amanda Edwards, Vice Chair Edwards, and swearing in Commissioner-elect Martin Moore. So thank you all for being here. And we're going to begin with the swearing in of Commissioner Al Whitesides. And we appreciate Judge Calvin Hill being here to assist us in this. Thank you so much for being here.
Mr. Number one give one to your administrative person, not to file one with the court of court. You want to take one of these count and manage?
All right, thank you. And now we will invite up Martin Moore, who will be sworn in by retired Justice Timmons Goodson. And Commissioner Vice Chair Amanda Edwards, who will be sworn in by Judge Allen Thornburg. elections, and we look forward to working with all of you. And I just wanted to ask if any of you would like to make any comments before we begin our briefing meeting in a few minutes, which I know I did not tell you I would do. So sorry for putting you totally on the spot.
I'm feeling less than talking to you over the next four years.
See, this is what I like. We're going to run very efficient meetings where there's not just going on and on. So anyway, congratulations to all of you. Thank you. And I think we are now ready to begin our regular briefing meeting. And if you're planning to stay, that's great, but if you're not, that's of course fine too. So I'll call the briefing meeting to order. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the briefing meeting? And are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our regular meeting at 5:00 this evening? All right, then we will follow the agenda for the briefing meeting as it's been published. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation on Waste Pro fee increases.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having us. My name is Cassie Lohmeyer. I'm the Recycling Coordinator with the Solid Waste Department, and I am joined by the Regional Vice President of Waste Pro, Chip Jingles. We are co-presenting today and just providing you a residential waste collection update. A little bit of just contract background before we get into it. We, Buncombe County, has an exclusive franchise agreement for residential waste collection with Waste Pro that started on January 1, 2020. It is a five-year contract with two two-year extension options. We are currently about to enter the fourth year of this contract. This contract covers weekly and bi-weekly, or weekly trash pickup and bi-weekly recycling collection in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County, so those are excluding the six municipalities. A little bit of cost background. The subscriber fee at the onset of the contract, so in 2020, was $19.21 a month, and the contract specifically stated that there should, that there would be no increase for the first two years of the contract. So in 2022, Waste Pro came with their first consumer price increase adjustment, which was 6.9%, and that increased the fee to the current monthly fee of $20.54 per month, per subscriber. Now, this presentation will cover two cost increase, two, two cost increases today. One is the annual consumer price increase, and that is automatic. This is just a courtesy notification of increase as outlined in the contract. The 2023 request is 7.9%, and that is in contrast to the 2022 increase of 6.9%. So again, the current rate is $20.54 per month. The new rate with this CPI increase would be $22.16 per month, so that is an increase of $1.62 per month, per subscriber. And this will go into effect January 1, 2023. The second contract cost increase is a request. Per the contract, the contractor must request approval from the Board of Commissioners. This is for a recycling cost increase of .39 cents per month, per subscriber. This request for the recycling fee increase would be effective on January 3, 2023, pending a Board of Commissioner approval at the January, of the 1st January meeting. And I'm going to hand it over to Chip. He will discuss the potential recycling increase more in length, as well as a general Waste Pro update in Buncombe County.
Thank you. And I see here they have a little bit more information about the contract, current subscriber count, 34,900 subscribers currently. Customer service, you know, we're always recruiting, and that will always continue. I have a saying, ABH, always be hiring, so we're always hiring. You know, we have a call center where we take all of the calls now. That's been out of Charlotte. We've been operating that for several years now. It has been very successful. We're able to monitor the calls, see how long, you know, customers are on hold, things of that nature. So that's helped us out tremendously. We do utilize caller malls. Haven't had to utilize that in a while, but we do utilize those in the event that we have route delays or changes due to inclement weather, things of that nature. Some of the reasons with the CPI, you know, there has been a tremendous increase in the fuel. One thing to note, though, the CPI, while that's helpful, doesn't cover fuel. The CPI mainly is for, I said, like the hard costs, like maintenance, cost of goods, things like that. Doesn't cover fuel. A lot of contracts have a fuel, fuel increase separate to the main number, because the fuel can fluctuate as well. There we go. As far as increases, we have increased our payroll drastically. Last year, we did an hourly increase. You see here, the increase from last year to this year was 17.4%. Was a little over 20% again this year. You know, it's a very tough market to recruit. There are definitely labor shortages, especially in this area, but we're just working hard to overcome that. Like I said, we're always recruiting. We do offer referral bonus and a sign-on bonus to all of the employees or anyone that refers someone to us. Benefits. We do, we actually bring in employees from Charlotte to help make sure that the routes are run on time here in this marketplace. We put them up in hotels. We do all of that when we are short. So right now, we're currently short just a few drivers. We look to get that shirt up soon. We are adding new trucks. We added several new trucks last year. We are going to add two new ASL trucks this year, along with what we call a small Hino. That truck is for the backdoor services as well. So approximately, right around $900,000 in trucks is what we'll be adding for this current year. And then I see here they have a note how during COVID, this is one thing that we're very proud of. You know, a lot of, I don't know if you're familiar with what's happened across the state, but a lot of the providers were not able to continue their service during COVID. And, you know, we're excited and proud of the fact that we were able to maintain our service levels during that time. So very, very proud of that. The CPI, I know that, like I said, that's not set by us, but the CPI increase outlines the dollar amount here. You know, Cassie went over that earlier, but the fee is $20.54 currently, and will be going up another 7.9% should it be approved. And here you have some information about the premium service. We do still offer bear carts. Seems to be a hot commodity now. Sometimes we have had some delays with some of the providers for the bear carts. You know, we generally operate with the lead time of six to nine months with bear carts. So we try to order well in advance. Like right now, I'm ordering bear carts for next year so that we can have them on hand for the customers. Okay? And with the recycling market conditions, I was going through, looking at the numbers. So locally, we utilize Kirby. I don't know if you're familiar with Kirby, but it's owned and operated by Barry Lawson. They do a great job, fantastic job, and I'm happy to say that you get some of the best rates I see in the region. With that being said, though, our rates have increased 225% year over year, and that's why we're asking for the .39 increase. We did work with the county staff on that, because we were, we came in asking for a number much more than that. That 225% increase rough, works out roughly to about $2.35 per home is what the increase in recycling goods is actually costing us. So we're looking for that .39 to offset a small portion of our costs.
And Chip, for clarification, when you say your costs have increased with Kirby, could you just describe that a little bit more? I just want to make sure I'm clear on, so they're acquiring the material from Waste Pro, and that's what they charge you for the material?
Yes, it almost falls in line with the disposal cost. So the materials that we pick up, we send to Kirby. We actually deliver them to Kirby. And, you know, historically, you used to get rebates. That's what we like to see on the commodities. The market does not allow for rebates right now. The cost is somewhere around $44, $44 to $69 per ton is the current rates that Kirby has now. And I can tell you that that is very competitive. In other markets, I pay over $100 per ton for the recycling commodities. Any questions or more questions? And while you're thinking of questions, I also want to introduce Tim, Tim Owens. Tim is our Division Manager here in Asheville. He's been with us, what, about four or five months now? So we're happy to have him here.
All right. So commissioners, any questions? We're not voting on this this evening, of course, just this is for information and preparation for deliberating on this soon. All right. It doesn't look like there's any questions now, so thank you for the information, and we look forward to calling up.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Community Development Block Grant Analysis of Impediments to Affordable Housing.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Philip Harden with HHS. Just want to give you a little background about the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Mary Roderick from Land of Sky Regional Council. Just a reminder that the county received a community development block grant. It's been about 15 months or so ago, and we're using those dollars to provide rental and mortgage assistance, mainly mortgage assistance. As part of that block grant with the Department of Commerce, there's some compliance documents that, that need to occur, and that's how we got here today with the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That's one of the compliance documents that we have to submit to the Department of Commerce. So I'm going to turn it over to Mary Roderick, Land of Sky, who we partner with to complete this survey.
Hello, everyone. I was surprised, actually. This is my first time here in front of you, and I got to see my boss out there on the wall, Nathan Ramsey. Apparently, he was on the commission for quite a while and served as the chair. I didn't realize that, so I'm going to have to take some pictures of young Nathan back in the day. That was pretty cool to see. So thank you for letting me talk you through this. I'm just going to try to touch on a few key points, and I'm going to start with just a brief overview of fair housing. So, let me, yep, looks like y'all now have the updated version. Okay. So you see on the left that graphic, it says fair housing, more than just words. HUD really expects jurisdictions receiving funding to take what they call meaningful action to address housing discrimination. Now, with that housing bond, right, that's super exciting. I think you have an opportunity to really support that. So I feel like the analysis actually comes at a good time, even though it was really done out of this compliance requirement, because you've received CDBG funding and you're over $10,000 as a jurisdiction. It's supposed to be done every five years while you have HUD funding. And the last one, which was a regional AI, was actually done way back in 2012. So it's overdue, and with your CDBG CV grant, it was, it was required. So, oh, sorry, it did work. I want to frame the context of discrimination a little bit more in the county. On the left, you'll see the seven protected houses, sorry, protected classes. These are the federally protected classes. And note that income and source of income are not protected. Some places, like City of Charlotte, does protect that now, and states like Maryland protects it, along with, they have 14 protected classes. But the minimum are these seven protected classes, and when you hear about fair housing complaints, at least in the state of North Carolina, those are things that have been, you know, in one of these categories. So I have two summaries. The top summary is the five-year summary from 2017 to 2022. There have been 10 complaints in Buncombe County, seven in Asheville, one each in Weaverville, Swannanoa, and Candler, and only three cases were found to have cause. So they, they, you know, researched it, and there's a, I'm not going to go into the whole process, but all of those were related to disability. Now, legal, the Legal Aid of North Carolina puts out a fair housing report that covers, in this case, almost a 20-year timeframe, and it's just complaints. I did see, because there was a question about this during the agenda review meeting, if there was any more information, and they really only have the complaint information. So that's not, you know, what happened, what was the outcome, was there cause, just the number of complaints. And in that report, Buncombe County is actually in the top three counties based on per capita for complaints. The state average was at 37.93, Buncombe County at 87.3. Now, you know, I, there is a question of like, well, there's only been these 10 in the last five years. Fair Housing, Legal Aid noted that in the last decade, fair housing complaints have gone down across the board, and that might explain why that last five years, you have far fewer complaints. But the state's analysis of impediment does caution against just looking at those, the number of complaints and saying, well, we're doing great. You know, they said they really feel like a lot of people don't bring complaints, especially in a tight rental market, which we have, because they are afraid of, you know, basically losing access to their housing through the making landlords angry. So that, access to the counseling needed to file the report, I mean, there are a lot of reasons that they list. So, so, you know, the numbers don't look too bad for Buncombe County in the last five years, but there's a caution to not rely too much on that number. But I did want to provide that information. So, come on. Okay. So the analysis of impediments overview, there's kind of these key analysis components. It's a, it's a larger document. I hope you've had a chance to at least kind of look at the executive summary, but it is available in draft form. And before I submit it to the state, certainly if anyone, and I've, we've been doing some rounds with staff, of course, if y'all have any comments, I will definitely incorporate those before I submit this to the state. But there's a countywide level of analysis, and that's the context and framing components, like demographics, housing supply, housing needs, and then the conditions of both public and private affecting fair housing choice. That's really across, and that's mainly around the housing market, and I'll go into that in a little more detail, that's across the whole county. And then our recommendations are very county-specific, right? Because the county is a jurisdiction with, you know, a set of tools for your specific jurisdiction, especially around zoning. So that, that review of jurisdictions, regulation, and administrative policies, that's specific to Buncombe County, and as, you know, the kind of assessment of how those affect the location availability and accessibility of housing. So I'm going to get into more detail on that. So going back to those conditions, public and private, you know, there's only so much that the county can influence this, but I think it's important to have in mind, and I know you're all aware of it, and I'm sure you've heard the name Bowen and the Bowen Report, because we've done a four-county one, now there's an 18-county one. You know, Patrick Bowen's busy here in our area, but, you know, Buncombe County has a .7% rate for for-sell housing supply, and a healthy market typically has 2% to 3%. So that's, that's a low rate. And in the 18-county region, you're only behind Burke, McDowell, and Henderson County for that. I think more interesting and more important, and one of the recommendations is related to this, is the mortgage denial rate. In Buncombe County, that's 1.5 to two times more likely for people of color. In Henderson County, it's actually 1.5 to three times more likely. So I'm going to come back, there is a recommendation related to that mortgage denial rate, and in a way that the county can use resources to help shift the needle on that, because people of color are more likely to be renters than homeowners. So kind of giving, you know, that's, that's one protected class, and giving people in that background kind of more access to homeownership is kind of the message. But we'll get to the recommendations shortly. In the, in the for-sale supply, again, just briefly, only about 8.3 total percent. So in the, the affordable and the workforce housing levels, that's what's in the orange box. You could probably add that third, third level as well, depending, but, you know, there's only 8.3% of the market available. This is a little older, it's the 2020 Bowen Report. And then the, the gap, what they project as a need, and there's a range, because there's two different methodologies for projecting that, anywhere between around 1,300 and 2,300 units over the next five years. So pretty big gap. But there's a countywide level of analysis and that's the context and framing components like demographics, housing supply, housing needs. And then the conditions of both public and private affecting fair housing choice, that's really across, and that's mainly around the housing market, and I'll go into that in a little more detail, that's across the whole county. And then our recommendations are very county-specific, right? Because the county is a jurisdiction with, you know, a set of tools for your specific jurisdiction, especially around zoning. So that review of jurisdictions, regulation, and administrative policies, that's specific to Buncombe County. And as, you know, the kind of assessment of how those affect the location availability and accessibility of housing. So I'm going to get into more detail on that. So going back to those conditions, public and private, you know, there's only so much that the county can influence this, but I think it's important to have in mind, and I know you're all aware of it. And I'm sure you've heard the name Bowen and the Bowen Report, because we've done a four-county one, now there's an eighteen-county one. You know, Patrick Bowen's busy here in our area. But, you know, Buncombe County has a point seven percent rate for for-sell housing supply and a healthy market typically has two to three percent. So that's a low rate. And in the eighteen-county region, you're only behind Burke, McDowell, and Henderson County for that. I think more interesting and more important, and one of the recommendations is related to this, is the mortgage denial rate. In Buncombe County, that's one point five to two times more likely for people of color. In Henderson County, it's actually one point five to three times more likely. So I'm going to come back, there is a recommendation related to that mortgage denial rate in a way that the county can use resources to help shift the needle on that. Because people of color are more likely to be renters than homeowners. So kind of giving, you know, that's one protected class and giving people in that background kind of more access to homeownership is kind of the message. But we'll get to the recommendations shortly. In the, in the for-sell supply, again, just briefly, only about eight point three total percent. So in the affordable and the workforce housing levels, that's what's in the orange box. You could probably add that third level as well, depending. But, you know, there's only eight point three percent of the market available. This is a little older, it's the 2020 Bowen Report. And then the gap, what they project as a need, and there's a range because there's two different methodologies for projecting that, anywhere between around thirteen-hundred and twenty-three-hundred units over the next five years. So pretty big gap. I've lumped those, of course, affordable is one category and workforce is one category. There are different income levels related to both those. I've just put them together for the sake of simplicity, but in the document, they're separated out. So I know you know that housing's tight here. That's why you did your bond, or I'm sure one of the reasons. But here, this just shows that there's a hundred percent, basically a hundred percent occupancy rate in all of the subsidized and tax credit housing that's available in the county or what was surveyed. That's not every single unit. And a much larger gap, about thirty-six-hundred to fifty-five-hundred in rental units that are needed. So the bond couldn't come at a better time. So, you know, there's not a whole lot besides supporting more housing development that we can do there. But as a jurisdiction with powers like zoning, there's more you can do. And that's why I'm going to focus on this a little. I've simplified it a bit more. And, you know, this is really a conversation that planning staff will have in more detail with you, especially in the context of your comp plan. But I do want to touch on a couple of points. You know, we found procedurally, there's a potential to kind of move the needle because right now, anything over eight units or four buildings requires a special use permit instead of admin review. Simplified, in Asheville, it's forty-nine units that can be built without administrative review. So, or without the special review, which is a quasi judicial review, sorry, I'm stumbling over my words, by the Buncombe County Board of Adjustments. And that just can increase basically the cost of the development. So that's one thing that we raised. The other is the standards, one is permitted use. That's a touchy subject. I think the state level's effort to redefine single-family zoning as anything with a household in it, simply put, did not go very far, but it probably will come back up. For, Buncombe County is doing well. You allow multifamily in a lot of areas, but four bay zoning districts do not, and that is forty-six percent of all your zoned land area. I'm not going to go into more detail on that. I think the lower hanging fruit is adjusting minimum lot size and maximum density standards. And again, it's all about generating more missing middle housing, that's that graphic at the bottom. And especially, I'm going to focus on the smaller sizes, the duplex and triplex, which really fit in the same format as a single-family home. Because sometimes it's about context, really. And other times, like, you know, airport industrial, there's a good reason probably to limit housing in that zone, right? You don't want to bring people to the nuisance and then have them complain about the nuisance. That's definitely always a rule in planning. So very quickly, the scenario I'm going to take you through is an R3 zoning scenario that does allow multifamily. In this case, this is a single-family detached house, the example that we're using. Well, the minimum lot size is six thousand square feet, this is a little over seventy-five-hundred. And current zoning would allow the duplex, which, you know, meets all of the standards. So I'm going to move on, I just want to kind of visual, you know, look at the graphic, don't try to read all those words. But this is not allowed by current zoning. This is a triplex, a triplex, you have to add another thirty-six-hundred square foot of area to your lot. A duplex can be built on six thousand, triplex has to have ninety-six-hundred. And the maximum density standards also violated. This lot actually only supports two point, well, two units. But if it went to like fourteen dwelling units per acre, you could build this. And form-wise, and actually Scott did park these, he put the parking on, it meets all the other requirements for setbacks, parking, et cetera. So this is just an example. Again, this does require a lot more thought and discussion. And there will be opportunity to do that within your comp planning process. So as a summary and our recommendations, you know, that first impediment, the inadequate housing supply, that just automatically limits housing choice, both in the for-sell and rental market. And that, all that recommendation is really around your zoning recommendations. So it's a lot of words, I don't want to read them all. And this is, you know, but that's the discussion to have with planning staff, with stakeholders, to say, if we made these changes, would you build more, right? Like, that's a conversation with developers, too, and a market conversation and an infrastructure conversation, as Nate raises a very good point. So inadequate supply of accessible housing options. Here, you know, your lever is probably when you're providing funding, and I know there are some requirements, you know, funding through your various resources like CDBG and Home, just to, you know, maybe provide additional incentives for increasing the amount of accessible units. Because there's definitely a deficit there in terms of your population profile and demographics. The lack of housing finance options to achieve homeownership. There are organizations like OnTrack that provide counseling. The Affordable Housing Services Program also requires people who receive funding to complete a financial literacy course. But I think that there's opportunity to evaluate what services are available to people, what their capacity is, and if there's a need to build additional capacity, either in that organization or organizations, or provide, you know, an additional resource for that. I think that that is a fairly, also fairly low-hanging fruit. Zoning changes are more challenging by far. And that discrimination based on source of rental income and previous eviction history. You know, Thrive Asheville has been working with landlords in a longer process. And honestly, I don't know that they've come up with real answers yet in terms of how to increase the number of landlords participating in the housing choice voucher program. There are a lot of strings attached through HUD. There are reasons, like my house would not have qualified because I didn't have air conditioning, right? That's one of the requirements, you have to provide air conditioning to the tenant. So it's not an easy topic, there's definitely, you know, there's challenges there. I did mention, City of Charlotte has passed that as an ordinance, the Source of Income Protection Policy. If they receive public subsidies, they cannot prevent people who have vouchers from living in that unit. The Human Relations Commission of Asheville has also already developed a recommendation to add it to the city's nondiscrimination ordinance. It's just a recommendation right now, it has not been taken up by council yet. So this is, you know, kind of maybe keep your eyes peeled on that, think about it internally for yourselves. You know, Matt makes, Matt Cable from, in the Housing Department or Planning Department of Housing, makes a good point that a lot of the funders already require that, so maybe it's redundant, but it's worth a conversation. And some places are taking that more formal step. So, you know, I think that's something that could be evaluated by the county. And finally, there's just that, this is typical education piece, lack of awareness of fair housing laws. People don't know what is prohibited. This is from the county's website. Matt said that that information is currently being overhauled to kind of provide more information and make it accessible through a lot of different means. So that's kind of already on the agenda, but that is one of the recommendations. With that, I will close. And if you have any questions, there's my cell phone number, I don't give it out just to anybody. I guess it is now on, like, on, in my email. But please feel free to contact me if you have questions, if you want me to walk you through anything. We should get this submitted fairly soon. They asked us for all the compliance documents in July and I'm like, we're not going to get that done in thirty days. I'm sorry, we got everything else done in thirty days, but we're not going to be able to do this in thirty days. So, because it's a longer process. Any questions immediately?
I have a question and a comment, since you brought up the vouchers. I believe that the voucher rates just went up as of this month. So I think that there, for a three-bedroom, it's an additional two hundred dollars. I think it's about a hundred and twenty percent of the fair market value, which was a pretty significant increase. So maybe that will help address some of, one of the comments there that you made.
That's right, and I did actually, just seeing, I did not put it in the presentation itself. But there was a question about the number of vouchers available, the number being turned back in because they can't be used. And right now, and I, so I edited the document to add all that information in and it's failing my memory right now. But, but yes, in terms of how much money you get with the voucher, yes, that does get adjusted over time. Where Transylvania County did not get included in the Asheville Metro number, so theirs is much lower, even though their housing prices are equally as expensive. And that's a problem, that's something Transylvania County needs to work on, for example.
The question that I have, let's see if I can articulate this. There's been some investigative reporting done, not here locally, but on a national level. And I'm curious if you're aware of this or if you see this, and it's around the apartment rentals. There's, basically, to the best that I understand this, it's basically they're setting rates. They're not setting it on local kind of supply and demand kind of issues, but they're using algorithms and it's a national firm. And I've, so it's large apartment complexes that are doing this. And so that through this, if this, if this reporting is correct, then they're actually basically, they're arguing that they're inflating the prices.
Because it's not based on local market conditions. I believe that Saskia Sassen, actually, a geographer, has written about that for a while. I mean, I read this while I was still in graduate school, these kind of global city markets. And it seems that that trend where New York prices are being set against Tokyo's, right? And it's not affordable then to people who are living and working in New York, actually. So I could see that being done at a national level as well. It doesn't surprise me, I did not look into that for this report.
Yeah, and from what I've heard, I mean, so it's a large apartment complexes. And adroitly, I've heard that it is impacting us here locally as well. And then part of that speculation is with that, so sometimes it potentially, if they're doing this, it encourages the property owners to potentially keep some units vacant because they're waiting on getting those increased prices. So that is, that's some of the, and I think the, I believe that the Senate is wanting like the Federal Trade Commission to look into it. So there's, you know, there's some of that going on. And I just wondered if you knew if any of that was impacting us here locally.
I did not, so I, you know, have, basically I have Bowen's analysis for how much does, do things cost? And how much is available at what rate? I don't think he has gone into kind of why the market rate is the rate it is. That is a good question and not one that I looked at.
Okay, and then the report that you referred to, the full report, can you get that to us? I've not seen that, I just saw the presentation that we had, that you provided online.
Yep, it's, and.
Mar has it? Okay, so you can forward it to us via email? Okay.
It's a hundred pages long.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm curious what steps and conversation we need to have to look at protecting income and source of income. That is a clear issue here. And so is that a conversation we need to have here before you move forward in that?
Well, we would, so that is a recommendation to begin the conversation.
Okay.
And I, Cassidy Moore with Asheville Area Habitat has a lot of good insight on this and a lot of good information. I think she'd be a great resource in terms of kind of discussing how to move that forward. And like I said, there are folks within the city of Asheville who have also started that conversation internally. So connecting with them, I think would make sense. But Maryland, like I said, protects, at the state level, protects fourteen classes. And I don't have them all in my head, but I know that source of income is one of the things, and they've done that for a number of years. North Carolina does not have any additional to the federal at a state level. But there's also, I don't think there's a.
So there is.
Charlotte's added it. Hopefully it will, you know, pass legal standing because we have, you know, our Dillon Law State. If the General Assembly doesn't give you the power, then you can't do it. But so far, you know, I don't, it's pretty new, so I don't know of any legal challenges yet. But that would be something to keep an eye on as well.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
On that, on that, on that item, if I'm understanding the issue correctly, one option is for the county to adopt a policy saying any organization or business that gets county taxpayer funding to build affordable housing or workforce housing must accept voucher recipients.
That's right.
And probably the large majority of them already do that, but we could make it a hundred percent.
That's right.
Okay. But what these other jurisdictions, Charlotte or Mecklenburg or these others, have any of them gone beyond that to say, no, this just must be a policy economy-wide, whether you get taxpayer funding or not, this is just a requirement for doing, you know, doing, you can't discriminate, nobody can discriminate.
I would look at, so Charlotte's is definitely for publicly funded, if you've received public funds to do, to develop the housing. So I would say in North Carolina, that hasn't been done yet. I would have to look at state of Maryland to look in more.
Or if it's connected to taxpayer funding.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, just curious, and I know it is, it is a complicated program. So it's not just sort of a, there might be many reasons why people choose not to do it. Not all nefarious, it is a complex bureaucracy, the way we create a lot of stuff in our country, especially around things like affordable housing.
Right, exactly. I'm not saying it's a super straightforward or simple thing, but it is worth looking into.
Right, okay. Parker, do you have a question?
I was gonna add something to vouchers, yeah, yeah.
Great, other questions? All right, Mary, thank you so much for your work on this and for the updates, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Yep. All right. Next up is the Conservation Easement Bond Project Criteria.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm Ariel Zipe, I'm the Farmland Preservation Manager for Buncombe County. And I'm here today to talk more about the open space bond, but specifically the conservation easement criteria and process. So we currently already have two existing advisory boards that are overseeing land conservation easements for Buncombe County. So those two boards already have this approval process, but I'm going to walk you through it so that you understand the criteria. So the, first, we have the Land Conservation Advisory Board, which I'll refer to as LCAB. Right now, the eligible funding recipients that work with LCAB are nonprofit land trusts. So these are the organizations that could be funded through this specific board. They're focused areas, focus on wildlands, view sheds, farmland, forestland, riparian and stream areas, as well as some public benefit projects. So they really have a specific focus in those areas. So next, then, there's the Ag Advisory Board. The eligible funding recipients for this board is the county-led farmland preservation program that I and Avni oversee. Our focus in, on this board is really farm and forestland projects. So both boards follow a very similar two-tier evaluation system. First, we rank the land using conservation criteria in, with each board having their own ranking system. And then we determine the funding source and the amount of funding that each project is eligible for. So that funding can look like grant funds from state, federal, other nonprofit organizations. It could look like our annual budgeted amount that's in the general fund. And now with access to bond funds, that is an addition to the funding options we have. So always, we are encouraging our program, as well as any of our nonprofit land trust partners, to make the most of grant funds that are out there. We are trying to put forward the best projects that will get grant funds so that we can really leverage those opportunities to bring into Buncombe County. That being said, then we determine whether a project is eligible for transaction costs or easement purchase for each project. So this is just a kind of a snapshot at one of the flowchart systems that we've created. And so you're really mostly just seeing that it's a complex system and it's been well thought out. We've been working through over the last six to eight months, trying to hone in this criteria. So the flowchart's really organized in two sections. You have the ranking criteria at the top, which would vary between both boards. And then you have your funding source and amount and that entire system below. So first, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Ag Advisory Board Project Evaluation System. This system is broken really into two parts. One focuses on the land evaluation, which is really an analysis of the farm and forestland soils on the property. And then we have a site assessment, which, as you can see, factors in a variety of different criteria that is really specific to farm and forestland use. And also showing the different types of potential of the property and as well as factoring in development pressure that the property is seeing. So from that part, the board has ranked the specific project and that criteria. And then we determine, is this project eligible to use bond funds? So this is a similar process to LCAB, this is Ag Advisory's. And we make sure that the property or the project meets at least two of the following criteria. So Ag Advisory has. So Ag Advisory has worked over many months to try to, you know, make this criteria specific for the types of projects that you typically see in Buncombe County. And should that project be eligible or be, meet at least two of those criteria, then they would be able to move forward and be eligible for bond funds of up to 50% of the easement value of the property. That doesn't necessarily mean that they will get 50% of the easement value. That just means they can request it. And then we must start the Ag Advisory Board approval process. And just like any project that the board starts, they have to follow that same process to be approved. And then, once the Ag Advisory Board approves it, it comes to the Commissioners. Now, to move to the LCAB project ranking system, a similar system where we have two parts. The first part really focuses on evaluating our land trust partners. So we're wanting to make sure that we're continuing to work with our local land trusts and that they have a good track record, that they're, we're really protecting the county's long-term investment. They're, they're completing their projects and really following through on that promise. So that's that first. It's either a meets or does not meet criteria. And then we move to the, the second section, which is really analyzing the conservation value of the property. So similar to Ag Advisory Board, you know, a variety of questions with different amounts of points associated to determine if the project is a quality project for us to move forward on. Very similar to the Ag Advisory Board process with a variety, slightly different questions based on LCAB's focus areas. But we need to meet at least two of these criterias for it to be seen as eligible. They are eligible for 25 to 50% of that easement value. And then, should they be deemed eligible, they would then start that same LCAB approval process. So from here, really, we have a handful of next steps. In January, we hope to hold a public input session for the open space bond and have, you know, a period of time that we would, we would be able to take public comment and answer questions, should there be any. And then we will review the conservation easement criteria that we talked about today and bring that back to a Commissioner meeting. And then in February, we hope to hold a joint LCAB and Recreation Services Board meeting to review the passive recreation, public input, and draft criteria there. Once that's been done, we hope to have the Recreation Services Board meeting to review Greenways' public input and also their draft criteria. And then we hope to present draft passive recreation and greenway criteria at that next briefing. And then the hope is that in March, the board will review that passive recreation criteria as well as the greenway criteria and bring that to the meeting. Does anybody have any questions on the criteria or the next steps in this process?
Well, I don't have a question, but first of all, I'll say thanks for sharing the farm Christmas tree photo.
Yes.
For folks to remember to go out and support our local farms. We do have Christmas tree farms in Buncombe County, folks. And also, thanks very much to staff. I want to compliment staff and all the members of both of these boards because we've clearly had some really good criteria over the years. And it's one of the reasons this program's been so successful. But they've certainly refined that over time, as well as with the, the bond passing. They worked really hard to be prepared, to be very transparent, and make sure that people understood the process and how all these funds would be utilized. So just kudos to staff, as well as all the members of both of these boards. Because there were a lot of conversations around all of this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks, Ariel.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is an update on strategic plan and the resident well-being.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's that quarterly time where we talk about another focus area of the strategic plan. Today, we're gonna talk about one of the biggest and probably medias focus areas within the strategic plan, which is our resident well-being focus area. So I'm gonna kick us off, and then I'll hand it over to Tiffany and Stoney, who'll walk you through each of the goal areas and give you a little more information. We do have subject matter experts from every department involved in this, in this focus area. So if you have any questions, we are hopeful we have the right person in the room to answer those questions. And then additionally, if time permits at the end, we do have some follow-up information for you on vibrant economy, responding to the questions that you all asked us back, I guess, in August now. And me and Tim Love will take team those and get you that information. So the resident well-being, what we'll talk about is we'll talk about each goal. So there's four goals within resident well-being. We'll go through each one of them, kind of talk about where we are in terms of measures, progress, kind of next steps, and try to give you some context. I'll just say that resident well-being, these are really complex goals that we're dealing with, for the most part, with a lot of complicating factors. And what we'll try to do today is give you that context appropriately. So. All right. So you can see generally, green is what the, is the color we aspire to have. That means we feel really good about where we are. We're making a lot of progress towards our 2025 goal. Yellow means it's a little more challenging, and red means it's significantly challenging. You're gonna see, I guess, for the first time since we've brought in a focus area to you in the last several months, fair amount of red and yellow on this. And Tiffany and Stoney will go in more detail about what that is and the conversation we'll have. But you can see, this is a challenging one. We have 11 departmental business plan goals and 22 initiatives to line up to here. I will note that there are a couple of departmental goals that are not included in that number. Just with transition and leadership in some departments, we've been updating business plans. So not everything's included in here, but we are striving by the next time we're here, we'll have everything in there for you. 73% of our goals are actively being measured and having progress being made on them. And 38% of our active goals are achieving their targets at this point. So that's generally where we are. And I'm gonna hand it over to Tiffany, who'll start going into the specifics of each goal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. And excuse me upfront if I have a cough, but I am processing something that's not contagious. The first one in our goal is expanding and maintaining cultural and recreational assets. And we have three initiatives in this goal. The first one is increasing the number of miles, specifically looking at the number of greenways, to be exact, four miles. Collaborating with the town of Woodfin, supporting stakeholders include Connect Buncombe, River Link, and the city's Asheville River Arch District Transportation Park. Initiative two is looking at working with community centers on programming and outreach to rural areas of county, as well as communities of color. And initiative three includes prioritizing investments based on data, creating park inventory, and setting standards for amenities. And the picture you see on this slide is Silverline Park that is located in the town of Woodfin, just north of Asheville. The park encompasses five acres along the French Broad River and opened this past April. This is the first milestone for a major project of the Woodfin Greenway, Blue Way, and White Water Wave. Included in this park is a train station, a platform for Craggy Railroad Line, a playground, a pavilion, picnic area, river access, a boat ramp, and more. So like Stoney, um, excuse me, Raphael said, some of the goals are on red, but there's a lot of work happening. And we could talk specifically about where we are in terms of our progress. We established new performance measures with the updated strategic plan for Parks and Rec that aligns with the county strategic plan and the racial equity action plan. We've received about $11 million in grants from TDAs for the various projects. The Silverline Park was completed. We've done initial inventory and assets of the, excuse me, initial inventory of assets and programs and started outreach into community centers. Some of the challenges that this has, this goal has faced is staffing issues. Currently, there are three vacancies, creating actual metrics for data collection, and then, of course, the rising cost of materials. It makes it difficult to also get a true picture of the cost of the projects as inflation is rapidly changing. And as you can see, this goal is essentially below target, and I will specify why on this community indicator. So if you look at the chart, in FY '21, there was about 12 miles of greenway. The target was 13.6. And in FY '22, there was 13.3 miles of greenway, and the target was 14. So we are still on target. We're just slowly making it towards the, an overall goal of adding four miles by the end of FY 2025. So that's the goal for Parks and Rec, increase the number of greenways. I will turn it over to Stoney to talk about transportation goal.
Thanks, Tiffany. Commissioners, this next goal is about increasing our access to public transportation as we attempt to positively grow our ridership. And you can see the initiatives there. They're really about targeting eligible participants with geographical proximity. So the strategy is really about taking the resources that we have, and that being our drivers and our routes, and then increasing access that citizens would have along those routes. So an example of this might be broad marketing to residents along our Trailblazer routes, targeting communities like apartment complexes or senior housing that are springing up along these Trailblazer routes to see if we can increase riderships there to older adults and also those that are living in affordable housing. Look at the next slide. This, this indicator is in the red, unfortunately. But a lot of that we can see is, is because the landscape changed radically on us, of course, when COVID came. And we, the good news is, we have seen growth from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. So we had 12.8% growth in ridership from '21 to '22. And however, though, if you think about that, ridership is still down. So if you look at the number of people riding in fiscal year '22, that's only seven, around 75% of the ridership we had pre-pandemic in fiscal year '19 and '18, respectively. And so what we're seeing, like, really, this is not just a Buncombe County issue. This is obviously a national issue around public transportation. So the transit industry is trying to recover from, from the pandemic. Of course, all of us went home, you know, for quite a while. So we weren't traveling like we were. And then when we did begin to travel again, especially if you think about the population riding public transit, telemedicine, there was no telemedicine really to speak of prior to the pandemic. Now we have folks that are able to be, to see their provider from home so that maybe they don't need to get on the transit like they did before. Also, just people's travel needs have changed. More people are working remotely. They're able to conduct their business remotely. I'd use HHS as an example. Pre-pandemic, and a lot of people come to our building to apply for services. Now, with the waivers, the federal waivers, people can apply from home without coming in. They can do telephonic signature where they used to have to sign, you know, in person. So we're seeing that culture is changing, and that's changing our ridership quite a bit over when this goal was certainly put into place. If we look at the actual goals, you can see here, we put the numbers over there on the left so you can see the actual numbers that we had pre-pandemic. And you can see it was rising. It grew rather, you know, almost 14,000 people between '18 and '19. And then we lost more than that in really what was just the first half year of the pandemic, if you think about it. But the good news is, we are growing again. And we do believe that if we can recapture, like, our Trailblazer riders who were riding prior to the pandemic, and our ADA, paratransit ridership, and our subscription folks, that we will be able to go back to where we were and reach these goals that we have set. Okay. So the next one, goal review, eliminate deaths due to substance use. It's also been a difficult goal. And the initiatives that you see here really all reside in HHS. And when we started this process, these goals, a lot of the work was happening there through a Safer Together grant that we had. Be happy to report out in a little bit just on how this work has grown across the county and the great work that's been happening. But if you look at Safer Together, and specifically around things like our syringe services program, our harm reduction programs, in fiscal year '22, we served 2,108 persons through our syringe exchange program. And I'm also happy to report that we have a 30% return rate on our syringes, which is well above the national average. So those are just some successes that we've had. We've also seen, in state fiscal year '22, we saw 450 reported reversals through naloxone distribution. So if you think about it, that's 450 deaths that did not occur due to our naloxone program. In terms of start, sobriety treatment recovery teams, we've also seen a lot of success in this program. So in fiscal year '22, 76% of those cases of children that were in families where there's coexisting substance use disorder, as well as child abuse and neglect involvement, we had 76% of those children were able to be maintained with their parents. So they did not enter foster care. The state average is around 40. And then an additional 18% of those cases were closed with children that were able to go live with relatives. So if you think about it, that was a 94% family success rate, which is almost unheard of in North Carolina or in the country, as far as that goes. And then we're really proud of our residential substance use services. So this is, we often talk about recovering housing, but this is recovering housing that's targeted specifically for mothers with substance use disorder. So it might allow their child to stay in their custody and live with them while the mother goes to recovery, would prevent the child from coming into foster care. It's been wildly successful. We currently partner with ABCCM for that program. And we had 26 women served in fiscal year '22. 17 of them achieved a positive outcome, and six are still in progress with 14 children actually returning to their parents' care as a part of that program. So even with all that success, here's the hard news. We're still in the red. And we'll get to that in just a minute, but listed a lot of this. But here's some more progress we've had here around our harm reduction, syringe exchange. Linkage to Care is actually supporting MAT access. We are increasing our BIPOC peer support specialists through our post-overdose response teams. So the challenge, you might say, wow, it's a lot of success, Stoney. Why are we not seeing this number go down? But the challenge is, the game changed. So like, we're playing a lot better, but the foe got bigger. And so while we're doing good, we're still not accomplishing our goal. And the biggest, probably the biggest factor, has just been fentanyl. And so much fentanyl, and it's not just in opioids anymore. So people are getting exposed to fentanyl in other substances now. And if you think about most of the work there, it's around opioid use. And really, we now have folks using stimulants who are not realizing it, but getting, getting fentanyl at the same time, which is increasing our overdose rate in the county. Obviously, the, the environmental stressors, social pressures coming out of COVID, suicidal ideation is, I don't have the data, but probably at an all-time high. And there's increases in alcohol use, misuse. Like, we're seeing this across society, right? Coming out of this thing, folks are really struggling, and we're seeing that in Buncombe County as well. So if you look at our trend rate, you can see we want that line going down. Unfortunately, it did rise from 2020 to 2021. And these are actual deaths in Buncombe County, unfortunately. And so we had 118 deaths in 2021 due to substance use disorder and overdose in Buncombe County. If we look at the community indicator or the, oh, I missed one. Yeah, I just want to show this sort of like trend lines compared to the state. So I wanted you to see what our actual number was, because the state data is always number of deaths per 100,000, and sometimes that's a little hard to do the math if you're thinking. But if you look, again, at this trend line, you know, we were sort of at the state average, or we would dip below just a little bit, up and down, until, you know, 2016, you saw Buncombe County really grow. And in 2017 is when we had this tremendous spike in the number of overdose deaths in Buncombe County. And I wasn't here yet, but to this commission's credit, especially the ones who were on it, and when I walked in the door, we had just completed a wide, like, community listening sessions. That's when I walked in. We just completed these community listening sessions. And then in 2018, if you remember, we convened a big gathering over here. And then in twenty eighteen, if you remember, we convened a big gathering over here at the convention center. We had so many people show up and we started talking about, uh, what I would call a comprehensive collaborative approach, approach to substance use disorder. And look what happened in that first year. We had our first drop in a long time and we were holding pretty flat until the pandemic hit. But even that first year, we really didn't go up. Look what North Carolina did compared to Buncombe County. Now I can't, I cannot make this slide a success because we have more people dying year over years. That's not a success. But the fact that we were holding the line showed the good work that we were doing. And then even as it continues to go, we're rising again, just like the rest of North Carolina. And unfortunately, uh, we still outpace North Carolina. So just to recap, some of the things that are, that are going on across the county now, uh, this is certainly larger than HHS. It's a pretty strong partnership that's forged among many departments in the county and in the community, I must say. So we now have two community paramedic teams operating and, um, we're, we're out there. Taylor's folks are seeing people after they overdose and they're offering them services and they're asking them, are they ready to enter treatment? They're able to get them into MAT on the spot and keep them connected. We have our MAT program in the jail. I just applaud the sheriff, he was back there. But, you know, not many people have this in North Carolina and it makes a really big difference because you can start your treatment there. And then I'll applaud Tiffany and her group. And then we have linkages to care or reentry programs where we can make sure you continue that treatment when you leave the detention facility. The strategic planning process for the opioid settlement funding, to me, this is a game changer. And Buncombe County was of course at the forefront of that effort as well. But it's really more than the money. I sit in on all these planning sessions and I'm really excited about the money. It's more than money. Like, we're sitting with people from the community who have lived experience in substance use disorder, either as a parent, um, or for themselves. Uh, we have people in recovery, we have providers. It's fascinating where this is going and I really can't wait for you to see the final plan that will come out of this because it's very community driven and it's really been exciting for me. Uh, we have the behavioral health and justice collaborative. Again, what a fascinating approach to look at those two issues together, how behavioral health and justice involvement, uh, intersect. We mentioned, uh, the substance use disorder, child foul treatment work that we have going on. And through ARPA dollars, again, thanks to you, we're able to stand up our behavioral health urgent care again so that it could serve more hours and be available as a resource. And then, as I mentioned, our reentry teams, our diversion programs, treatment courts. Uh, it's really exciting to know what we're doing and our hope is obviously to move this trigger out of the red just as soon as possible. All right, back to Tiffany.
Stoney. Sorry, Stoney, I was gonna ask you a question real, real fast while you're still there. About, um, your slide thirteen with the line graph, the, the tragic one about deaths in Buncombe County.
Yeah.
I didn't know if the, um, it'd be really interesting to see if the data exists and would be therefore possible to see that trend over time with the change in substances that are being used by, or the, the majority of substance out in, out in the.
Like what is the actual substance that's causing?
Yeah, cause over, you know, that's over twenty two years. I'm sure it's, uh, changed a lot.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
We'll look into it. We're not sure, but we'll, we'll come back and give you an answer. Either we can do it and we'll give it to you or we can do it. So we'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Um, so this is actually a good segue into the last goal. And that's reducing our jail population and enhancing public safety in partnership with the ID Bureau of Justice Services. We have, uh, three initiatives that we're going to discuss with you today. The first one is to reduce the number of unserved processes in the warrant repository. And what this does is reduces the chance that someone will be arrested, um, due to a process that was dismissed or, um, disposed of by the courts. So making sure that there are no outstanding warrants in our repository to ensure that folks aren't getting, getting picked up when they should not, uh, be. The next initiative is increasing community safety and increasing alternative pathways for people to move through the justice system. And so as I go to this next slide, it says untargeted. And it could be a little misleading as I show you the next two data points about our jail population. Uh, mainly these goals are on target for doing what we set out to do. And again, that's the process of reducing the number of unserved, um, uh, warrants in the repository. We are on progress to, uh, look at increasing our community safety and accountability for those to, to do harm initiative, as well as creating alternative pathways for people moving through the justice system. We've had seen some challenges in this goal. Uh, the state launched an e-warrant and e-courts implementation and that's impacting our local systems as the datas don't necessarily talk to each other, as well as just issues with the launch of AOC's, uh, elect, e-warrant system. It's not really, um, conducive to North Carolina's court processes. And so we're seeing a lot of issues in just court data in general. And then we've also seen the jail population return to pre pandemic levels. And that is driven by the number of people, uh, being picked up or being put in custody for failure to appear and the length of time that people are staying in our, uh, detention facility. So specifically this slide just shows you the jail population on an average by month. In two thousand and nineteen, we were hovering around four hundred and fifty. And then of course the pandemic happened and we saw a large release of people out of our jail, mostly related to like those low level offenses, misdemeanors, um, and looking at people's ability to pay bail. Instead of the overtime, we have, uh, went back to some of our old, or the courts, I should say, have went back to their pre pandemic processes. And so we've seen a increase in our jail population over time. When we're speaking of initiatives that necessarily the county or partners can work towards, we kind of change the community indicators to look at people that are, uh, returning to incarceration or are in jail based on a new violent charge or returning for failure to appear. And so when we look at two nine, two thousand nineteen, the failure to appear is the orange line at about fourteen point six percent. We saw a drastic reduction, but we're seeing an increase. And again, people being brought into custody because they didn't show up for court and there was a warrant issue for their arrest. When it comes to looking at people returning to custody for a new violent charge, that is staying kind of consistent or a little bit lower or less than it was in twenty nineteen. So we are trying to make efforts on addressing failure to appears. Uh, we're launching a court navigator program using safety and justice challenge funds where there will be a peer or someone from the community helping assist people register for a court notification system and working with those that come into the courthouse, understanding, uh, the court processes and ensuring that they're aware of the consequences for not showing up for court. Uh, we are developing and promoting a court notification system, uh, using AOC's court reminder system, but also partnering with the Code of Asheville, who created a local, uh, locally sourced, uh, database for people to sign up and get reminders as well. Uh, the district attorney's office and the public defender's office have established a jail review team. So there are specifically staff that are looking at the population in jail and determining, uh, ways to dispose of the cases or see if they can get people out of custody faster. And then we have been, um, constantly evaluating or working with community to identify root causes and try to inform that, uh, how we do business in the future. Like I'm talking very fast. Sorry. And in terms of the other goal of enhancing public safety, we've done a lot of work to do that, including the consolidation of nine one one with law and fire dispatch from Buncombe County and the other municipalities, city of Asheville, town of Black Mountain, Montreat, Weaverville and Woodfin. Uh, the emergency services have established, uh, peak trucks to address the call response time. There's been a lot of ARPA investments, including the, uh, ARPA funding for the community safety violence prevention work where we're, um, on our way to releasing our RFP to get a community based organization to begin the violent interruption program in our communities, uh, creating a community, uh, paramedic outreach team, working with our local child advocacy center to ensure that, uh, children are getting the right services when it comes to trauma. And then ensuring that those who are survivors of domestic violence, intimate partner violence, sexual assault, child to elder abuse have access to continued ser, um, services, uh, after the VOCA federal funds were cut significantly. So those are all our efforts for enhancing public safety. And then overall, some of the, uh, summary and key takeaways, and I'll do a minute to pause for the last goal if there was any specific questions before I review the overall resident well being.
Just a quick, kind of big picture question, um, around both public safety and then the overdose related goals. Is it staff sense that if these were more resourced, we would be, uh, closer to green or in the green? Or is it staff sense that these are truly complex problems where the county is sort of one actor among many? We are doing really innovative interventions, but we're just not able to keep pace with, uh, with, with these issues.
From a staff perspective, I think it's both A and B. I think these goals are kind of, uh, realizing that it's a marathon or it's not a sprint or maybe even a relay, right? These are real large community, uh, issues and we're building capacity as we get resources. Um, it's about staff and community pa, um, capacity as well. Stoney, I don't know if you have anything to add to about that?
So I think it's a, it's a really good question. And Tiffany's right, in some elements, you can resource us as much as you want. And the challenges from society will still remain there. But I think as this board, as we have discussed over the last year or two, there are certain areas in the resident well being focus area historically have not been as resourced. And that this board has made some pretty important investments over the last year or two. And as we continue to see those investments take fruit, um, some of which are still ongoing, we hope to see more movement to the green. You know, the substance abuse, I'm not sure that's a really challenging one, but there's a lot here. So it's a combination.
I guess as we move forward in these conversations, not just about resident well being, I'd be interested in us having really frank, candid discussions about the resources side of the house. I think in some areas we have those conversations. It's going to cost tens of millions of dollars to do X, Y, or Z in our community and we need to fund it this way, through a bond or debt financing. I think in some other areas, we tend to approach it sort of from the other side of the house. Here's five hundred thousand that we'll invest and after twelve months assess the impact of versus what would happen if we invested fifteen million dollars in this issue? So as we move forward in these conversations, I would just be very interested in hearing assessments about that. Not saying we'll move forward, but so we can have the information available to us, particularly if there are interventions that seem to be having an outsized impact in some of these areas. And we're seeing that, for instance, at the pilot level with limited scope because it's a pilot. But I'd, I'd like us to be able to sort of think in bigger, broader brushstrokes about how we move the needles in some of these areas where we know the issue's not going away. Um, we know the county's doing significant and impactful work, but not at a scale enough to keep, to keep pace. So this is very, very helpful. I think we've got to, you know, we've got to just always look honestly at what the data is telling us. But I also hope we can kind of, um, broaden the field we're playing on in a sense, as we're thinking about what's going to actually work in some of these issues.
What other, uh, data point I'm interested in, whether we have this information or if it's something that could be looked at? So the, um, the information that we've looked at on these slides, um, on the opioid piece, uh, and overdose, uh, and overdoses is tracking, you know, how many people have died this year? What's the trend lines over a number of years? Do we have information as a community that's at least sort of ballpark about the number of people in Buncombe County who, um, are wrestling with uh, opioid addiction in some form? Is that, is that something that I'm sure it's impossible to have like an exact number? But is, is, is that something that there is good research looking at?
We can find another data point. I think we've talked about that at our group too. Like we're showing you one piece of, um, I guess opioid use and that's deaths. But we can look at how many visits are in the emergency room, who's in treatment? I think that is a conversation, um, we can get data back to you. It might not be the entirety of the community and population, but it is some additional data.
I would, I would be, I would be interested in that. I mean, of course, I think looking at the mortality numbers is, you know, is obviously is an important metric to tr, to track when someone's actually lost their life as a result of this. You know, but these are such big numbers, you know, that if this many people are literally losing their lives, then like how, like how many people are, are be, whose, our lives are being directly impacted because they have, you know, developed an addiction and are struggling with it? Uh, just to be information I'd be interested in learning more about. And, and maybe we need to, you know, think about that metric too. Like how do we, you know, how do we over, and again, these are long-term efforts, right? Not overnight, but like what, what can be done to just bend that needle down as well? Because even for a lot of folks, of course, don't ultimately have a fatal overdose. It's just like so severely impacting so many people's lives.
And I'll be candid, kind of on that point, I, I don't even know how much the data that you would get could really indicate for folks who don't, who aren't at a crisis point where they're using substances inappropriately, but still find themselves not going to any ER. That's just kind of two years down the road kind of thinking. So I think to Jasmine's point about piloting and being very careful about year by year solutions, that, that's definitely something that we should look at with both of your points. Can I ask you a question though about slide eighteen? For the number of people that have returned only on failures to appear, do you have any breakdown on what that looks like for a future meeting? Cause if we're bringing people back for a class three misdemeanor that they missed a court date on, that's certainly going to impact our jail population and does not seem to jive with what a lot of us are expecting to keep someone in custody for long term.
So just to be clear, make sure I understand the question about like, what is the top charge? Or what is the charge associated with them returning back?
If you don't mind providing data around that, because I'd, I'd be concerned if it were something substantive, but if this is lower level things that aren't going to eventually long-term hold folks, I'd love to know what that is, what the charges are.
You can definitely add that to our list, bring back. And I think there was one more slide too as well. And recap and kind of answer some of the, of the questions you had, Commissioner Bishvarar about, um, what we're seeing is staff waiting for the clicker to move. So in our focus area progress, we have established new departmental gro, goals and tried to establish an equitable approach. Uh, so we have been looking at, uh, redefining our business plans, especially in the, uh, year two of our strategic plan and having new leadership. Uh, as you know, the demand for transportation has changed because of COVID. And so running to return back to pre pandemic levels and then expanding as well. Uh, the expanded access to services for substance use and individuals impacted by the justice system. I want to focus our attention and look at how do we reduce people being booked into custody for failure to appear. I mean, there are also multiple strategies and investment underway to enhance public safety. Some of the challenge we're seeing is, uh, why are we kind of in the red and not green? Uh, the demand for services or the changes in services because of the pandemic, uh, the staffing and supply chain, uh, issues, the increased behavioral health needs due to higher acuity, higher lethality and availability of fentanyl and just really the behavioral health, uh, trends because of the isolation and impacts of pandemic. And then I think this sums it up well. We're also not the sole entity for impacting these goals. We are looking at the capacity or the resources our, um, recovery community has or the medical community, our court partners and how they, uh, process cases or the data that we have access to, to, uh, dispose of warrants. And so, um, we are continuously partnering with our community partners to address these goals, but we don't have necessarily control over the outcomes of, uh, some of, uh, the, uh, goals that we are aggressively trying to achieve.
All right. Thank you all for the, uh, presentation, the updates. Any, anything else on this item?
Uh, we're going to do, we have a couple of slides to follow up on fiber and economy.
Okay.
We presented back in August. I'll run through them, but Tim Love is here as well. And Tim is our subject matter expert, so he can answer. Let me go figure out what's going on with the presentation. This is where we play the hold music. Now, I gotta say, I love the companies to have the thing where you can get the callback, but you don't get the hold music anymore. It's just not the same experience. Okay. So, it sounds like we are gonna wait till the next meeting, and we'll bring back fiber economy to you all. We'll also keep working on the follow-up for you on resident well-being. So, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, that's everyone, that's everything that was on our briefing agenda. So, let's adjourn, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting. Okay, take a group picture now? Okay.